Okay, you ready? All right, it's 7:00 PM. I'm going to officially call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. My name is Lauren Christensen. I'm vice president, and I'll start with introductions on my right.
I'm Judy Westra, member of the board. Thank you for being here tonight on this dark and cold night.
Good evening, Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Happy New Year, everyone. My name is Anubam Chigsood. Thanks for being here.
I'm Cheryl Picard. Welcome, everybody.
Patty McCoyn, thank you so much for being out here tonight.
Josh.
Josh Patterson, Student Voice in Action Representative and Plymouth sophomore.
Sayyed Poirier, SVA Co-Chair and Canton Junior.
And Dr. Merritt, can you introduce yourself and the team?
That's right. Good evening. I'm Superintendent Monica Merritt. Welcome back to the 2024 component of the school year. It's been a, this school year is going by so quickly, but great start to the school year. I'd like to begin by introducing Ms. Robertson and thank her for being here, taking our minutes, and keeping my head on straight. So appreciate you, Ms. Robertson. And have everyone else introduce themselves to you from the core team. We'll get with Mr. Fran.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Good evening, everyone. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Good evening. Kurt Tiskowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Good evening. Jill Minnick, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening. Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening. Shante Langford, Chief Human Resource Officer. Welcome.
Welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Engagement.
Now let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a motion to adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda?
Madam Vice President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda. Action item 240137.
Can I get a second? Second? It was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by Secretary Sedu. Okay. And then, I'm sorry, I'm a little off. Just walk you through it?
I'll walk you through the agenda this evening. Not a problem.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you know, 2024, New Year, and I got a little lost. Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Please walk us through this.
This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have new hires, one of which I see walking through the room right now. Woo-hoo! Welcome back! We also have leave's resignations and retirements for your consideration. We have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting. This is on December the 12th, 2023, and the final reading of Policy 5310. That's on health services. Finally, we have out-of-country field trips for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Those saying, for those opposed, please say no. Okay, motion passes. What come we do? We have 6-0. Thank you. Ms. Langford, please take us to Human Resources.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Christensen. So tonight, we have four new hires, well, three new hires and one kind of a transfer. So when I call your name, maybe you'll stand up and be recognized. I'd appreciate that. Scout Bosley. Hi. Scout will be a language arts, project-based learning teacher at Pioneer Middle School. We have Penelope Kasmerzki. Doesn't sound like I need to do any introduction. But she will be music elementary at Farron's and Smith's, and also the VA.
And I smiles came into my music life.
Yay! Welcome. And then finally, we have Riley Sheppers, who will be history and economics at Plymouth. And then our fourth new hire happens to currently be our Associate Director of Finance, who will be moving into our Director of Finance Accounting position, Joanne, better known as Jody Malborne. Congratulations, Jody. And then finally, this evening, we have one retirement that we must recognize, James J. Lealock, who is a high school assistant principal at Salem, has been with us since 8/31 of 1998 and will be retiring effective January 26th of 2024. We wish Jay all the best, and I can personally say I've enjoyed working with him both as a parent and as an employee. So we wish him the best. And if my three new hires could quietly meet me in the hallway, or four, I have something for you. That concludes our portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langford. Okay, on to celebrating success with Secretary Sedu.
It is an honor to do this. This evening, the Board of Education will once again celebrate our community with an extra miler award to one of our hard-working and outstanding staff members, auditorium manager and technical director, Paul Byrd. As a member of the communications and marketing team, Paul manages the Gloria Logan Auditorium and the Dubois Little Theater with experience and expertise. He also serves as the Director of the Park Players Theater Company. In many ways, you could say that Paul Byrd practically lives at PCSEP, and I could vouch for that. I've been here many, many nights, and he's still here. He's often on campus late nights and on weekends overseeing the auditorium for outside rentals as well as student events. Paul was a vital visionary of the auditorium renovation at Salem High School and spent significant hours serving on committees and providing valuable insight to make sure that the space was just right. His dedication to the district has been truly remarkable. During the COVID shutdowns, he helped create acting opportunities for students by partnering with 88.1 The Park to produce radio dramas. The group still does A Christmas Carol on the radio because of the time Paul invested into these productions. As the district returned during the later stages of the pandemic, Paul was a key to producing Board of Education meetings when they were moved to the Canton High School Dubois Auditorium, sometimes on very short notice. He is also a very valuable member of the Communications and Marketing Department with an admirable, humorous, and humble personality. He is ultimately focused on what is best for students, staff, and the entire school community here at PCCS. And I'm going to go off script a little bit here, and I want to personally add that I've seen Paul do all of this and more. I want to personally thank Paul for his dedication to the program and the students by giving them space for creativity, music, art, and leadership. In early 2017, his students attended many board meetings and personally invited the board to see their shows. I, along with many board members, have attended these shows and have been moved by these performances. It gives me chills just to talk about everything that I've seen with his students. His students have become change makers in and outside the school community. He is truly a servant leader. At this time, I would like to bring up Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, to share a special tribute to Paul on behalf of the nominator for this award, 88.1 The Park Station Manager, Bill Keith.
Thank you so much, Secretary Sedu. From Bill Keith, certainly on behalf of our entire team, I can't think of many people that are more deserving of the extra miler award than Paul Byrd. In many ways, Paul is an unsung hero of Plymouth Canton Community Schools. He is quick to stay in the background, allowing the light to shine on his students and colleagues. You will find him at Salem all hours of the day and night, that's a running theme here, isn't it? And many weekends, working productions, repairing equipment, and keeping the auditorium presentable. We also want to thank him for the many ways he has supported 88.1 The Park and many other programs at the park over the years. Paul has been in the district all these years because he loves his students, Salem High School, and The Park Players Theater Company. Congratulations, Paul, on this well-deserved and long overdue curtain call. Paul, you've meant so much to our team. Congratulations.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Paul Byrd with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Miler Award for consistently going the extra mile to support the students and staff of Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Please accept this honor. And would you like to say a few words?
I'm kind of overwhelmed by this. I've been with the district now for just over 26 years. I've seen so many staff members come and go, administrators come and go. And I've enjoyed the relationships I've had with all of them, but the reason I've stayed for 26 years is the students, literally seeing thousands of them come through the doors, watching them grow, gain self-confidence through performing arts, and that's really what's kept me going all these years. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the team that I was fortunate enough to be brought into. The support that they've given me has been incredible and very much appreciated. So with that, I'd just like to thank everyone for the opportunity to be a part of this community and to thank all of the students that have come and gone. So, thank you.
Okay, we're on to committee reports and action. I'm going to skip number one because I know Secretary Sedu's out there taking a picture. Let's move on to the Policy Committee.
So we have not met since the last board meeting. We are meeting Tuesday, January 23rd, which is in two weeks from tonight. We meet at 5:30. We meet in the collaboration space, which is all the way down this hallway. You follow it all the way to the back, and that is where we are at 5:30. Everyone is welcome to attend.
Thank you, Ms. McCoyn. On to Finance and Operations with Treasurer Kehoe.
Yep, I'm just pulling up last meeting's thing. Our next meeting will be Thursday, January 18th at 5:00 PM. At the last, and everybody is welcome here. Our last meeting, let's see, was, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one here. Yep, December 21. That's what I'm trying to find here, and I'm not seeing it. So we met on December 21st, and we reviewed a number of the presentations that we're going to be seeing this evening, including the, excuse me, the CTE purchase of the computers that we're doing this evening, the resolution that we're doing on the JV turf field replacement, as well as the presentation on the Panorama School Survey that was there. And we prepared and reviewed those presentations, which will be coming here this evening. We also discussed the new AVM contract, as well as reviewed the KPIs for both our custodial and our transportation teams.
Great, thank you. On to Student Voice in Action Committee with Josh and Sayyed.
So first up, at our last Student Voice in Action meeting, we discussed the PCCS dress code, the food menu at PCCS, and our upcoming speaker, which will be coming to our next meeting to discuss food items and our concerns with, like, the food menu.
And then our next meeting will be on Monday, January 29th at 6:00 PM.
Great, thank you. And then we're going to go back up to Student Performance and Achievement Committee with Secretary Sedu.
I think we should have passed it right to Member Westra. I was not at the last meeting, so she took over for me.
All right, and I am drawing a blank on when we met, but we met before the holiday break, and we discussed the health curriculum that will be coming before the board for the first read tonight, as well as out-of-country field trip that is on the consent agenda for tonight. And our next meeting is January 10th at 5:00 PM in this room. We hope that you all can join us.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to Administrative Reports and Recommendations. Dr. Merritt.
Thank you, Vice President Christensen. As I reflect upon our dynamic plan and one of our goals of being a leader in innovative educational experiences for students, I can't help but begin with pride by congratulating four PCEP graduates who were literally in the national spotlight last night as members of the University of Michigan Marching Band. They were performing at the College Football Playoff National Championship in Houston. Color Guard members Alyssa Aznavarian and Alex Clemmons joined tuba player Johnny Granillo and drum line member Miles Raya in the field at the NRG Stadium, playing the Victors as the Wolverines won the national championship. Now thinking about having four PCEP alumni as a part of the band is especially noteworthy, given that there are fewer than 300 members of the band itself. So we're really proud of our students. All of us here at PCCS are proud of them for using their skills that they learned as a part of our PCEP band programs to play in one of the nation's best bands. So let's congratulate them and our staff. Also, good news today. Dr. Ally Williams wins the Jay Towers Educator of the Week. We want to congratulate her. She was our Student Support Coordinator at Erickson Elementary School. She was recognized for her efforts working with students after the WNICJ's Towers in the Morning Program named her this week's Educator of the Week. Educators are considered for this award after they are nominated by community members, and the winners receive prizes and a plaque from the popular morning radio program. We're so proud of Dr. Williams and the work that she's done to help students succeed at Erickson. Her recognition also shines a light on the work that all of our student support, I'm sorry, professionals do each day to help our students learn, prepare, and thrive. So we want to congratulate Dr. Williams. Next week, the nation will honor the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. here in Plymouth Canton. We will celebrate the message behind Dr. King's lifetime of service when Canton Township, the Canton Chamber of Commerce, and PCCS come together again at our It Starts With Me, the MLK Day celebration. This will take place on January the 15th. It'll be held at the Village Theater at Cherry Hill. The doors will open at 6:00 PM, and the main stage program will begin at 6:30. I would like to invite all who are able to attend to participate. We will have performances that are going to be held by our students here at PCCS. There's going to be a keynote address, and also there will be presentations of scholarships at this event. The night will conclude with a reception with light snacks and music. So again, this will be at the Cherry Hill Village Theater at 6 o'clock on Monday, January the 15th. And finally, as we know, January is School Board Recognition Month, and it's a time to salute the work of our esteemed school board members and to celebrate public education. Here in PCCS, we recognize the important role that you as school board members play in our school community. Your advocacy and your service are always in the best interests of our students and families, and we greatly appreciate your work. If you allow me a moment, I would like to read a recognition resolution passed by the Wayne Reeser Board of Education in December in honor of all that you do. Whereas the Board of Education of 33 constituent school districts of Wayne County promote quality education for every child attending their schools, and whereas these exceptional public servants demonstrate enthusiasm to their duty and voluntarily contribute countless hours of service on behalf of the students of Wayne County, the educators that support the students daily and their communities, and whereas Wayne County school boards are resilient advocates for the needs of students in their communities and with policymakers in Lansing and Washington, and whereas Wayne County school boards are committed to advancing the student achievement and well-being in the schools and communities they serve, and whereas the Wayne County school boards understand the importance of access, opportunity, equity, and excellence in education for its students, and recognize that a quality education is the most important factor in the success of our communities, state, and our country. And whereas local control continues to play a vital role in the success of public education, and whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become informed and productive contributors to society and our ever-changing world. And whereas the State of Michigan and the State Board of Education have declared January 2024 as School Board Recognition Month, and whereas School Board Recognition Month is an ideal time to recognize and celebrate the Wayne County residents serving on school district governing boards of education who help guide the education of pupils and pre-kindergarten through grade eight and who prepare these pupils for global competitiveness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency Board of Education and the spirit of the School Board Recognition Month recognizes and celebrates the contributions of leadership of the Wayne County School Boards of Education presented and adopted December 20th, 2023. Members of Plymouth Canton Community Schools Board of Education, on behalf of the entire PCCS school community, we want to thank you for your vision, your voice, your advocacy to elevate every student every day without exception. We continue to show our appreciation to you throughout this entire month because it is not just one day that we celebrate you. We want to just thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all that you do to ensure the success of our students. Please join me on that. So we'll be back on the 23rd to celebrate you just a little bit more. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. On to Finance and Operations with Ms. Minnick.
Thank you, Vice President Christensen. Thank you for the opportunity to bring forward for the board's consideration this evening a number of things. First is the approval of a resolution for the purchase of 60 computers for the CTE department. This is a first reading, and it was reviewed and discussed at the Finance and Operations Committee on December 21st. So with us this evening is Mr. Mark Salzer, our Director of Integrated Technology, and Ms. Monteen Barbie, our Assistant Principal at Canton High School, who oversees them and the CTE program.
He's been coaching me for the last six years on every time we bring one of these resolutions. We are hoping it's actually about 64 standalone computers and a laptop cart, not to exceed This is a refresh cycle. We bring some set of labs to you every year so that we can maintain the curriculum for our computer science, computer programming, business, marketing, CTE courses. Should, in the end, end up serving anywhere from 300 students a semester to approximately 1,200 students a school year for the next five years.
Happy to take any questions you all have. So we're, we did discuss this, and the equipment is right size for the curriculum as we talked about in FNO.
We had a lot of conversation about it in FNO, about the needs of the equipment and the state of the art and the process. So it's, we're supportive of the choices that goes into this.
Great, thank you. I'm going to open up to questions, starting with Ms. McCoyn.
I don't have any questions. I read all the material, understand some of it, so, because I'm not, I can use a computer. But thank you for making sure that the students have what they need to be successful.
I have no questions. I was at FNO.
No questions, because I know these two do thorough research and make sure that we get the best quote, best product. Thank you.
Again, we just want to mention that this is actually being supported by the CTE budget in this process, so this doesn't come out of our general fund, and so we're really excited about that, is not having to use our capital funds or our general fund for this, but specifically the CTE 61A added cost budget.
Only question is, when will you get these in, once they're approved?
So if we go to our second read on the 23rd, and we'll place an order, we have to place the order, if you'll notice, the quotes expire on the 26th. So we're going to place the order on the 24th, and right now, the ship to is two to three weeks for the desktops and three to four weeks for the laptops. So assume, we're assuming in February, and then we're going to try to ready them for at least some of them to be deployed over the spring break.
Awesome, thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you.
So I have just one. For the laptops, do they come with cases, or are we going to need to invest in cases?
They're in a cart. The cart will travel with the teachers, probably similar to what you see now. We're, we have a wonderful amount of students for computer science. We just need more space, so we're working on that. And Mark has been so helpful. I say this every time I'm up here, but if you know him, you know how helpful he is and how amazing he is to work with our department. Like, honestly, we could employ him just for career in tech ed. If he lets me know how, we utilize him, I'm just super grateful, because like you, computer science is not my forte. I rely on Mark for all of that, and it's wonderful to have such amazing support with our technology department.
Thank you both.
I do have one question regarding the retired equipment. What happens with the old computers?
Do you want to, either one? So we utilize our retired equipment to refresh lesser labs, so sometimes that's utilized throughout the district, it can be, or it stays within the Career and Tech Ed Department. Our regulations for the added cost budget, we just have to use things for a certain amount of time, and once they're retired, as long as we keep track and they stay within district, we can share those resources. How do I do?
You did great. I will actually say that we're blessed that this, the CTE program is well-funded, or, you know, is very supported by the state, and as a result, we are grateful for the hand-me-downs because they actually do benefit non-CTE labs, because they have a shorter refresh cycle than our general ed class, general, general, non-CT labs. And we have a lot of those. So this is always, it's always nice to have them get equipment, because we're going to then get equipment that'll be a little bit nicer than we would have otherwise had. And we're looking forward to this stuff, too.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is consideration for approval of a resolution for the PCSEP JV Stadium Synthetic Turf Replacement. This is resulting from damage sustained in the severe storms this past summer. This is a first reading, and it was discussed at the Finance and Operations Committee on December 21st. So with us is Mr. Rich Welch, our Director of Operations.
So good evening, everyone. As many of you know, due to a severe storm last fall, we had flooding at both turf fields, which caused the fields to float. Once the water drained away, both fields had ripples, waves, and bubbles left in the top layer of the turf. After contacting A-Turf, who did the last stadium, to check on warranty and SETSEG to talk about a possible insurance claim, we proceeded to follow A-Turf's guidance and bring in Turfix, another company, to see if they could help. Turfix spent two days making relief cuts and restretching the fields. The work at the East Turf was successful, and we were able to start using the field again. Unfortunately, at the West Field, it was not successful and actually got worse as the days went on. The field started to pull apart at the seams. The seam separation caused trip hazards and rendered the field unsafe. We circled back and contacted Foresight Design to come out and give us a complete evaluation of the field. In their report, they advised us that any further repairs would compromise the integrity of the field. We forwarded Foresight's design report to SETSEG to inform them that we had a larger issue and the field will need to be replaced. SETSEG completed their own evaluation of the field in early December. January 8th, I received a verbal approval from the claim, that the claim was approved from SETSEG Claims Manager Mark Ramsey. During this process, with the help from McCarthy Smith, we solicited, went out and solicited two quotes to accomplish the resurfacing of the turf. The first quote was from A-Turf for $573,333. They were the original installer of the field. The second quote was from AstroTurf for $518,476. AstroTurf is the, was awarded the contract of the new turf at the newly soon-to-be-constructed stadium that will be attached at Phase 3. With all this information, given the significant use of the field and the need to have it usable as soon as possible, along with mitigating trip hazards and the confirmation of this being being an insurance claim, we would like to recommend we move forward with AstroTurf for the resurfacing of the West Turf Field. After talking to Todd DeWolf, President at AstroTurf today, he assured me that once he has the approval from the school board, the material can be ordered and delivered in about a three to five week period. With an additional three to four weeks for installation of the new turf, he said we'd be looking at an early March start of the field tear up with the possibility of having the field completed by mid of April, which will allow us to use it for the spring.
Thank you.
Help any questions, answer any questions that you have.
Did you want to provide additional context?
I just was going to ask a question because originally when we were talking about this, we were suspecting that this was going to be work that was going to happen all the way over the summer. And so, and there was a long lead time on the, this field. It seems like we've got a shorter lead time and it may be worthwhile for us if we feel comfortable as a board moving this to a first and final so that we can accelerate the process of getting this, this turf field replaced. And I think we should ask questions first as we go around, but that would be my suggestion.
Okay. Start with Ms. McCoyn.
So in this information, they talked about SETSEG having this be an insurance claim and then maybe FEMA disaster funds? Would SETSEG be paying for the whole thing now or?
Correct. This will be rolled into our whole claim of the happen that during that period. So it was, we had a couple of schools that got flooded, so it's kind of a all-in-one. So yes, SETSEG would be completely paying for the entire thing.
Okay, so that it's not coming out like of general fund or?
No, so the only thing we'd be responsible for is our deductible, but it's, that deductible would be spread over everything, of multiple buildings that we had flooding at different areas that we put insurance claims in, so it would be a smaller amount.
Thank you.
Patty, when we, when we reviewed this before the break, it was not clear whether SETSEG would cover that.
Right.
And so we, we had three options. One is that we were going to proceed with it. Two, we were going to have SETSEG be able to pay for it. And then in the event that SETSEG would not, we also had conversations with, with the Canton Township and that, that area had been declared as part of a disaster and it would have been available for, for FEMA reimbursement. So we're pleased to see that this is done through SETSEG.
Yeah, perfect.
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Secretary Sudhu?
Thanks, Trustee McCoyn, for asking that question. I'd like to dig into that a little bit. Would it be possible to update this document, given that this document says we're not sure what SETSEG is going to do? So before, just for transparency for the public, that information should be included in here before we vote on it? And then the other question is, you talked about deductible, can you just share, is that going to be combined with something else?
So don't pull me on this. How much is our 5,000 dollar deductible? That is spread over a claim.
Okay.
Multiple claims.
Multiple claims. So yes, we can update that and I can get that to you for board reports if that's okay for the weekend. But it literally, everything kind of came together two day.
Well, that's good that they're covering and I just wanted to be reflective in the document.
Understood, understood.
If I may just add, we don't have that in writing yet.
Correct.
But we do have confirmation verbally from a significant VIP.
From the Claims Manager himself. I should, I'm hopeful that I should have something in writing process by Thursday. He told me that we should be able to get something by Thursday.
I was, my questions were actually the same as, as Member Keough's, whether we could expedite this and get it going in time for the spring.
That would be, if you could, if we could buy two, two more weeks, that would be great.
How do we do that? Can we do that?
Yes, we can.
So we'd get an action number and then we'd move this to, we'd move this to resolution. Diane, I believe it's 240140?
Yep. Vice President Christensen, the action item to make this a first and final will be 240140.
I want to open up to questions for both Josh and Diane.
I have no questions, thank you.
If this is passed, do we have like an estimated timeframe of how long it would take to like get?
So I'm hope, I'm hopeful if we, if it's passed today, we would for sure have the material probably by the March date to start. It's all kind of weather dependent, but the good part is it's not a whole rebuild, it's just a turf top of it. And the nice thing about the rubber pellets is it's a heat conductor, so it'll melt any snow or ice that's there relatively quicker or a little bit quicker than normal, like a normal grass field.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other further questions?
I do have one.
Okay.
If we are going to do a final resolution tonight, can we do it conditionally on getting the written approval, just to be completely transparent? Is that possible? Or I don't know how this, how this works, that's all.
I would recommend that we not do it on a conditional approval. This is work that we're going to want to do no matter what.
Okay.
And if, because even if the insurance company has a delay, we don't want that delay to end up slowing down this process. And we have both the insurance from SETSEG as well as the FEMA Disaster Relief Funds that will backstop this repair. So I'd prefer not to have this be delayed any further.
Fair enough, okay.
And just again to, for transparency purposes, at the next meeting, could we have an update with something in writing?
For sure.
Just as a follow-up and that could be documented?
Yes, I will push that, push that envelope as quickly as I can.
Great.
Okay. All right, so since we had the suggestion to make this first and final and Member Westra also expressed an interest, we have an action item here. So again, this is me learning on the fly. I, so I am going to, do I make the motion or do I?
I can make the motion.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam Vice President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for the PSEP JV Stadium Synthetic Turf Replacement. This will be a first and final reading and the action item will be 240140.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Trustee Westra. Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Okay.
Thank you.
Next is for consideration and approval of a resolution for an ABM Amendment to the current contract. This is a first reading. It is resulting from recent building additions that have created more cleanable space. And so we did discuss this at the December 21st Finance and Operations Committee meeting. And with us this evening is Todd Fleming with ABM Industries and of course, Rich Welch. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Thank you for your consideration of MOU 4, which as Jill mentioned, will, will add three additional full-time equivalency custodians to our staff here at Plymouth Canton. And also as she alluded, this is due to, you know, the improvements and additional spaces that have come to Plymouth Canton recently. How do we come by this number of three? Our contract, and, and, and Mr. Keough alluded at the FNO meeting, this is basically a math problem, right? And I said, yeah. Our contract and ensuing MOUs are based on total number of FTEs. However, those FTEs are based on the square footage of the district and we use that with, you know, production rates, et cetera. So the square footage you currently have added equals three additional FTEs. That's spaced out over several buildings and you'll see in the MOU that there's some, you know, odd numbers. So we've asked, we've asked for three additional FTEs for over, I think it's seven buildings.
Eight buildings?
Eight buildings. So the half FTEs, those are simple. Those are simple part-time, halftime, you know, four-hour positions that we can either split between buildings or get a part-time person that only wants four hours of work. What might be a little concerning is, or questioning is the .38 FTEs. You know, how, how do you supply a .38 FTE? And I think what we'll, what we'll do and what I'm recommending to our management team is let's get these spaces up and running, see how they work. Because some of these spaces will be more heavily utilized, some will be less, and they'll just have to shift, you know, to see where these FTEs will go. You know, and it might be, we have one or two people doing half in, in two different buildings for their shift in the, in the evening, which it works. It's, it's worked in the past, it's worked in the past year, it's worked in the past, you know, at other, at other districts. So that, that about covers it. Any questions?
Okay, I'll open it up to Ms. McCoyn.
So yeah, I guess my concern is being able to have enough extra people to do this? I mean, especially if you're not hiring for a full-time job, how that would work out?
Well, ideally, we do hire for a full-time position. That, that's, that's the first and foremost, we want to provide a career. However, not, not everyone is looking for that. Some people are looking for a part-time position to do after maybe a first primary job. And we do often find, you know, four-hour people or even two or three-hour people, which in this case, that would be ideal if we can find somebody that wants just two hours. But again, we can split them up and move them between buildings. We don't really ask for, for an employee to move more than once during a shift. That's a little undue, but, and again, you know, it'll be a little playing around with it to make sure it all works and each space is getting, taken care of properly.
I do not have any questions, thank you.
Just to dig into the conversation that started with Member McCoyn, are you able to find new people for these positions? You feel like there, there are enough people out there for these jobs?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, as you know, you know, we've been challenged with staffing. You know, in the last several months, that challenge has been reduced for, for several reasons. But the, the, the most positive outcome of that is now we're having turnover, positive turnover. We're not just, you know, you know, we're getting rid of people that maybe should find a different profession. But the, the backflow into these positions has, has been fine.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Just to add on to that, when we reviewed the, the results of the KPIs at the last FNO meeting, we're seeing a substantial improvement. There's still some areas for, for concentration where we're not, you know, where we need to be, but certainly from a hiring perspective and a general cleanliness perspective, there are, things are in a much better condition. One area that Todd and the team have committed to doing is, is looking at the, the anecdotal feedback that we've heard about bathrooms at the high school and what could be done to try to address that process. And so they're going to be going back and looking at that and seeing if they can give us some, some ideas on how to be able to address those challenges. Not, not necessarily at the beginning of the day when everything is all clean, but what happens throughout the day.
Especially at the high schools, you know, before lunch, after lunch, class changes.
No further, no questions. Thank you for all the work on this.
Thank you.
All my questions were answered, thank you.
Same here, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, we are on to action item number 24-01-38. Consider approval of a resolution, a resolution for BP Big Package MS-2 East and West Middle School Addition and Renovations. This is a final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Miss Vice President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for Big Package MS-2 East and West Middle School Addition and Renovations. This is a final reading and action item is 240138.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Trustee Westra. I apologize. Do we have any questions before we, we go to a vote? Any further discussion?
We discussed this at the last board meeting. This is a reminder to everybody.
Yep, exactly. Okay, I will call for a vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Okay, we're moving on to action item number 24-01-39. Consider approval of a resolution to purchase marching band uniforms. This is also a final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Madam Vice President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to purchase marching band uniforms. This is a final reading. Action item is 240139.
Can I please have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so it was moved by Treasurer Keough and seconded by Member McCoyn. And I'll open it up to any other questions or dialogue before our vote.
It's 2002 they were purchased, the ones they're replacing.
We thought they were more than 20 years old, so.
They are.
Okay. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Okay, on to Communications and Marketing with Mr. Brandon.
We're pleased tonight to bring forward to the board and to the community the results of some of the most recent work that we've done in partnership with Panorama. For this evening, we'll be sharing results of the Family School Relationship Survey that was administered this past fall, as well as our Student Social Emotional Learning Survey. We'll be sharing results. We'll talk about what's going to be done with some of those results and next steps by department. And then of course, we'll have an opportunity for questions and feedback. Like all the work we do at PCCS, this is closely lined with the Dynamic Plan. If you look through the student surveys, staff surveys, and family survey work, really connects to all five areas in terms of the strategic goals of the Dynamic Plan. It really all comes down to voice. If you even look through the strategic objectives of the Dynamic Plan, we talk a lot about community voice, staff voice, and of course, the voice of our students driving the work that we do. This survey work is a key part of that, so you could see it truly aligns to strategic goals A through E in a variety of ways. As we look at the logic model for this work, a couple important notes in terms of short-term, midterm, and long-term goals and outcomes. For the short-term, of course, as always, we'll be sharing the comprehensive results of these surveys with our community. This evening, they'll be posted to the district website. We've done this every year that we've done the family survey, even with our previous partner. So families can spend time with the work. We of course want to be transparent with the results and share those out. So this evening is one of our short-term outcomes, those results will be shared with our community via the website. Also in the mid and long-term, we'll really be working closely with our buildings and our programs, building leaders and even at the classroom level to make sure that these results are a key part of decisions moving forward. We do have results of these surveys that are broken out by building and that's what we will share with building leaders and program leaders. Of course, we'll continue also to communicate about the surveys in the long-term, put together a strategy to maximize participation. We really saw some positive encouraging signs for this survey in terms of our participation and we'll continue to be really intentional about maximizing that. The more community voice we hear through this survey work, the better. And that's why participation is one of the most important data points when we look at the results of this survey every single year. In terms of administration, just to bring the board, the community can up to speed with where we're at. At this point, we're obviously presenting the student survey and the family school relationship survey. That's work that was done this past October. In the middle of the year, sometime in February, we'll be getting the voice of our staff through our staff and teacher survey. And then we'll circle back at the end of the year with more student survey work and another family school relationship survey. That's an enhancement to this year's process versus previous years. We really wanted to have that twice-a-year touch point with our community to make sure that we get data that's real-time during the school year that we can use to make a medium, a median improvements within a school year, but then also get that spring feedback that kind of circles the end of the school year. So then in the off-season or in the summer, we could do really intentional work to get ready for the following school year. So with that, when we look at the improvements to this year's survey program, that's a really big one, just changes to the content, scope, and delivery from last year to this year. Again, taking one spring survey even before last year with our previous partner, we just touched base with our families once during the spring. We changed that to be a fall survey and a spring survey to make sure we're getting as much data as possible so we can make those real-time enhancements during a school year if needed. We also really took in the voice of our students with our student survey. And we changed that from three administrations a year to two. That was in direct response to student voice that we received, that it just might be more efficient to have two. to have two surveys versus three. The enhancement to the reporting and the implementation are really key. Panorama's been a terrific partner for us. Now, all of our surveys are living under the same roof, which means all the reporting is living in the same area as well. So that triangulation of the voice of our students, our staff, and our families can truly work together with great synergy. And then year-by-year comparison updates, you know, the longer we go, the more year-by-year comparisons we'll have. So this fall gave us the opportunity to make comparisons to last fall and last spring. So this visual really brings that to life. What we really wanted to do, what we set out to do starting last year with the survey work, was form that really good triangulation between staff voice, student voice, and family voice. Make sure the surveys are working together. Make sure they're complementing each other. Panorama really gives us the gift of what they call their topic bundles or their benchmarks. And so we can have consistent benchmarks within these three surveys and be able to make comparisons within those benchmarks. And we'll share more about that as we get into the results. Those benchmarks also allow us to make national comparisons. It's one of the really outstanding things that Panorama gives us, is we can compare ourselves with really schools and districts around the country in these benchmark areas. It's a really terrific thing that we get to do with Panorama. So with all that being said, at this point, we'll dive into some of the results. I'd like to bring up Mr. John Adam Flukes, our Director of Data Assessment, Research, and Evaluation, to take you through some of the basic results from these three surveys. Mr. Flukes?
Thank you. So I'm here to take you on a 19-slide journey to talk about what we found from the survey results from this fall. So this slide actually is a helpful way to kind of think about what we'll be going through in the next 19 slides. So we're going to talk about each of those surveys that we collected this fall, and we're going to talk about the content of each of the surveys. We're going to talk about the response rate information. We'll highlight some of the high-level key findings and some of the results, and then we'll make some connections to the current things we're doing here in the district and the next steps that we have. So before we dive into that, I wanted to just refresh everyone's memory about how we talk about looking at the results from these surveys. So we really have two different metrics we look up, we talk about when we look at the results from these, and these are from Panorama. The first one is, we look at the percent responding favorably to each item and to each topic bundle. And to see how that works, this is an example of an item that a respondent might see, and they're usually given five response options. And so when we collapse kind of the top two, we talk about percent responding favorably. So that's kind of what it looks like when we talk about those results and we see them in the upcoming slides. And then we also have the opportunity to compare where we had the information available in the top-up bundles, how we compare to a national dataset. So that way we can get a sense for how are we doing compared to the rest of the districts in the nation. And you'll see these color codings and these national percentile bands when we look at some of those different topic bundles. So we'll start with the Family and School Relationship Survey. These are the topic bundles that we asked this year, and this includes kind of a short summary of each of those topic bundles, as well as one example item from that top-up bundle, so you can get a sense for kind of the kinds of items that were asked. Later, on the last slide of my section, there'll be links to the actual content of the survey, so you can see every single item if you want to see that information. But these are the big topics that we asked families this fall. Now, we'll talk a little bit about the response information that we had from this fall. So you'll see a trend of more response rate across the board. And so this is an example. We got more feedback from families as compared to last year when we did a similar survey. And that meant about 160 or so responses per grade level, if you were to average that out. And it took respondents about nine minutes. That's kind of like the middle length of time. If you were to line up all the different times it took to take the survey and do a line right in the middle, that's where it was, about nine minutes. So that's about the halfway point to how long it took respondents to respond. And they were actually being asked 48 items plus some demographic background items. Just some of the high-level key findings that we saw from the families is that we had relatively high levels of engagement, and we saw limited barriers when we asked those types of items and topic bundles. And we saw that perceptions of the overall social and learning climate in buildings were high, and that we saw increases compared to last year. And we felt so good about that, that we made another bullet that said essentially the same thing. So we saw positive increase in school climate again. Family support, school fit, grit are potential areas we might need to look into a little deeper and see if there's some areas that we might need to focus on. And then in terms of the open-ended responses that were asked of families, there was one question where we asked families how you might try and engage the community more, or parents more from the community in the schools. And so they really talked about ways in which we could survey families and offer some insight into ways they could impact family involvement and offer more opportunities for them to engage in school offerings. When we look at the findings, so now we're looking at those two different metrics now, the percent responding favorably, and then the national comparison where we have that information. And these are ordered by percent favorably at the top. So barriers to engagement was the highest. When we think about those responding favorably, more families responded favorably to the items that said, no, there's not that many barriers, actually. So that's kind of how we make sense of that topic bundle. And then the least favorable item was family engagement. However, if you look at the national comparison, that actually was relatively high. So while families say there's, they might have some issues engaging with the school, that was actually high when we look at how other families across the nation talk about it. So in general, there's lots of barrier, or there's lots of engagement issues nationally, but that we rank relatively highly in those areas. There was only one topic bundle, as you see, school climate, that we were able to ask the entire item set from last time. So that's why we only see information about the change from last time we asked those items to this time, and we saw that increase, as I mentioned earlier, in the key findings. This also, just, I want to put this in here just in case, because that barriers to engagement item did come up as one that's hard to wrap our heads around when we previewed this presentation to different groups. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone kind of had a good understanding of what that looked like when we look at individual items. So here are two of the 13 barriers to engagement items, and what those actual items were, and the response options, so you could see how it went from not a small problem when we asked, you know, for example, how big is the problem following, how big of a problem is the following issue becoming involved in your school regarding childcare issues? And so when families mentioned that they weren't a problem, it was a small problem, that was seen as a favorable response. So that's kind of how we collapsed, and Panorama collapses those items for that topic bundle. While we didn't have a full topic bundle for each of the items, these are all of the individual items that we asked the last time, so last year. So this gives us a nice summary of every single item that was asked last year compared to this year, and the change that we saw from our families across the board. So most of these items saw a positive change when we asked that item again. And we see two at the bottom there around grit, and you'll see kind of a pattern as you get to some of the other groups that we asked grit items about. We see that that might be some, one of those areas that is a good focus area to kind of dig deeper into. Now, switching gears to students in grades K through 2. Now, while students in grades K through 2 don't actually take a survey themselves, we asked teachers of students in grades K through 2 about their perception of students in these six areas. And it's a relatively short survey. It's really just seven items that a teacher responds for each student in their class. And so these are the topic areas that they, and the actual items, that they review for each student in their classroom. Again, we see, we saw more response compared to last year in terms of the overall total responses and the response rate. And as you see, this is relatively quick. So per student, it takes about 30 seconds for a teacher to rate each student in their classroom. And some of the key findings, we saw that we saw relatively similar results compared to last fall, and that emotion regulation, social awareness, and engagement were rated highly, and that grit, learning strategies, and self-management are areas that we might potentially want to focus into. And here are those actual results with each topic bundle, percent favorable, and then our change in percent favorability from last fall. Panorama does not provide any national benchmarks for the K-2 teacher perception survey, so we don't have them here. Moving to our students in grades 3 through 12, they actually did take a survey. And these are the topic bundles that students were asked on the student survey. Notice the diversity and inclusion topic bundle was only for students in grades 6 through 12, but the rest of them had, were asked of students in grades 3 through 5 and then So we saw a higher response rate and more responses this year compared to last year. So up, you know, over 1,700 responses, and then an increase of 14% compared to the last time we asked students to engage in a student survey. And for the students who in grades 3 through 5, they saw about 45, they saw 45 items on their surveys, and students in grades 6 through 12 saw 58 items. And these are the median response time, not such response times, but minutes it took to take that survey for each student in those grade spans. It's a little bit longer for the students at the earlier grades, who just might take longer to read the items. So we talk about our high-level key findings, pretty stable findings when we look at last fall. Relationships, sense of belonging, and growth mindset were relative strengths when we look at kind of the national comparisons. Again, and you'll see that grit was a potential area of focus, as students kind of rated themselves low, as well as families rating themselves low, when we talk about comparing grit to the other topic bundles. And we also asked students an open-ended response on each of these surveys. And essentially, it was what can teachers or other adults do at school to better help you or support you? And so essentially, shortly after the survey window closes, district and building leaders can go in and look at the pre-responses, and they do read those pre-responses. And I want to thank the students at the, when we previewed the survey presentation, that there was some confusion as to, does anyone even read this information? And actually, some students wrote that in the responses, like, no one's even going to read this. Well, actually, they do, because I read that one. And one student even said, I'm just going to hold the key down, and no one's going to read this anyway. And a bunch of keystrokes of all the same letter. And then at the end, it said, oh, by the way, I wish we had more time at lunch. And so we did, so they did have something to say, and we read it. And so those are some of the things that building and district leaders can do shortly after it ends, is that they kind of thematically organize these in a way that they can get to and sort through those responses. And so some of the common themes we saw in the 3rd through 5th grade group was that they talked about needing additional support in reading and math, and that they hoped that adults would understand their problems and emotions a little better. So those are some of the key things that students in upper elementary said when we asked them directly. And here's the topic area results for each of those topic bundles for students in 3 through 5, for percent favorable, national comparison. You see their grit was a little bit lower when we look at the national comparison, but the other ones were relatively high. And we saw stability and positive increases across the board when we look at percent favorability. For our students in middle and high school, again, we saw stable findings when we look at, when we compare that to last fall. Diversity and inclusion and motion regulation were relative strengths when we talk about a national comparison. And then we saw that teacher-student relationships, grit, and sense of belonging might be some potential areas to focus on. And again, similarly, with the open-ended responses for our secondary students, they talked about understanding students' needs. They had lots of thoughts about the purpose of and the amount of homework, and they had a lot of feedback on schoolwork and assignments that they have in school. And here are the results for the 6 through 12 survey. Again, you'll see relative stability when we look at what we saw last fall, and a fair number of increases in terms of percent favorability as well. And then this slide doesn't have any new information in it, but it's a nice way for us to kind of get a high-level view of all of the topics that we asked all of our different groups, as well as the percent favorability and the national percentile, so we can kind of get a nice satellite view of where we see common patterns. So if we want to look at, for example, grit, that's the one across where we see slightly lower national percentile rankings there. So it kind of gives us a sense for where we might need to see some commonalities, and can capitalize on some common things you might want to do across groups and over different topic bundles. And you notice that the Staff and Teachers column is all gray, because we haven't engaged with Staff and Teachers. That's for the middle-of-the-year survey that we'll be asking later on. And we'll have those results at the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Flukes. That is one efficient 19-slide journey right there. As mentioned at the top, it's just vitally important that we're transparent with our community about the results from these surveys. So within this presentation, and as I mentioned earlier, posted to the district website this evening, will be the summary reports from the surveys as you see on the screen, including the Family-School Relationship Survey and the three student surveys. Very important to note, as we put on the slide, that the summary reports from this, when we look at comparisons, compares what was administered this past fall to the most recent previous administrations. What that means for the student and teacher perception survey results is that's comparing fall to previous fall. But with the Family-School Relationship Survey, the comparisons are fall to this past spring. Obviously, this coming spring, we'll have our first opportunity to do a true year-by-year comparison with the Family-School Relationship Survey, when the second part of that is administered this coming spring. So with that, the remaining timeline really just gets into a lot of engagement, as mentioned during the logic model. Making sure that we're staying connected with our building leaders, our program leaders, sharing out the results, doing some post-survey analysis, and making sure that this survey work is used properly to make sure that we're improving the student experience at all levels every single day. Even into the summer, we'll continue with our post-survey analysis and content review, and obviously, we'll have spring data to do further analysis as well with all of that data. With all that said, and the most understandable question is, we've done the survey work, how are we going to use it? It's the right question to ask. And luckily, we have the right people to answer that question with several leaders here who can speak to individual areas. We will start with continued work and next steps in the area of teaching and learning with Ms. Beth Rale.
So there's several ways that we, as a teaching and learning department, and a teaching and learning team, all the way down into the buildings and building equity teams, use this data. So I'll share some of it, high-level, but give some specific examples. They're not all-inclusive, but it will help kind of anchor into some examples. So we use this for focus of after-school and summer programming. Examples of that are increase in the tutoring program that is a collaboration between student family engagement and teaching and learning. So as we look at students who indicate that they need additional support in math and reading, I mean, our data shows it, as well as self-reporting from our students. So as we increase those. Cross-curricular PBL units, as we've shifted to cross-curricular PBL units during summer academy to really look at that grit and perseverance piece of the work that takes place with students, you'll see, you saw the dip between spring and fall in the parent survey. We've seen that since we've started Panorama. We've seen it get higher in the spring, good news, and then dip over the summer, and a much lower score from parents and students in the fall coming back. So that's telling us something happens over the summer. So the one thing we've really looked at is how we shift our summer programming to kind of dig into that and help build some of those perseverance skills over the summertime. Also, looking at individualized programming in the summer and the expansion of our summer programs. You'll know, you'll remember, over the last three years, we've significantly expanded our summer programs. Classroom connections to our PCCS learner profile. We're in the midst now of the next iteration of the learner profile work, where we're building out progressions to say, what does this look like specifically, transparently for students and for staff? So when we say that we're looking at goal-directed and resilient learners, what does that mean? How do you become goal-directed and resilient? What specific skills do you build to do that? What does it look like to be a collaborator? What are the skills for collaboration? We use that word a lot, but what is We use that word a lot, but what does it look like if I walk into a classroom? How do I know students are truly collaborating instead of just sitting together in a group and doing individualized work in a group? Creation and support of building-level equity teams that identify and meet specific building needs. Each of these findings results all the way down to a building level, to classroom level. So what's happening specifically in the buildings? What do we meet in our building so that it looks different in different buildings because we see different findings in different buildings? Family engagement events, including increased opportunities to engage with schools in a variety of formats, virtually, in-person and hybrid-type formats. Examples of this are our EL family engagement activities for our newcomer families so that we make sure that that sense of belonging and feeling of welcome is across all of our different demographic groups and all of our student groups in every building. So it's really specific and tailored to the building needs based on feedback from the families in the buildings. Review and expansion of clubs and affinity groups to meet student interests. When we look at sense of belonging, it's not just what happens during the school day in each classroom wall, but also what experiences do students have that they can engage in so that they feel a greater part of a larger whole. Grading committee work that's been taking place, we've talked about the middle school grading work, but there's also the high school grading committee called the Investigators who are looking at grading for equity. What does that look like? That grit and growth mindset piece, removing additional things from grading to really get to mastery of learning, but also to support that grit and growth mindset. Support for transitions between levels for students and families. This is really showing up a lot as we look at how students come back to school in the fall. So we've traditionally done things like web and link crew, but we've had a lot of discussion about enhanced summer programs and how that looks a little bit different for different students and how we might do some kind of unique and new things that you'll hear more about, so I'm just teasing a little coming attraction here. Continued instructional extracurricular program review and revisions. New course proposals, we bring them quite often, but there's a specific purpose for which we bring them. For example, how do students see themselves in the content that we are working with them through? Do I sit in a classroom as a young woman? Do I sit in a classroom as a student of a different racial and ethnic minorities? How do I see myself in the content? As we bring forward different new course proposals, there's a reason we do that. So each student sees themselves in the learning that they're taking place in. That increases a sense of belonging, it helps me feel connected to the content and it helps me make connections to my learning. Things like advisory homeroom, PBIS programs, all of those things are specifically designed to target all of those areas about belonging, sense of welcome, sense of pride and sense of connectedness and community. That's just a snapshot of many of the ways we use this data as a teaching and learning department, but there's many more beyond that. But I wanted to kind of give a quick overview of that. And I'll hand it over next to Dr. Liz Bartanian Gibbs, who will talk about student and family engagement work.
Thank you, Ms. Rale. So the Department of Student and Family Engagement will continue to support building leaders and school improvement teams to create engagement opportunities for parents at their schools. Okay, no big deal. We will align our work to the school improvement goals of the school and plan ways to connect more parents and guardians to their schools. Programs such as Strong Fathers, Strong Schools provide new opportunities for engagement at the school level. Family academies tailored to address the particular needs of each school community help increase the percentage of families participating in school events. The birth-through-kindergarten programming, which is ready to launch, will connect additional families to our school district. And our department is eager and dedicated to providing any and all support and resources needed to support school and district engagement.
Thank you, Ms. Rale and Dr. Bartanian Gibbs. We do hope our community stays closely in touch with the work of student and family engagement. There's some truly fantastic opportunities for our community to stay close to PCCS. Turning now to communications and marketing and student services, when you look at student voice, one of the key areas that that was definitely incorporated heading into this year was in the student handbook. I'd like to kick it to Mr. Kurt Tiskowitz to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. This past summer, we utilized students in the middle school and high school level to take part in our handbook revision. We do that annually where we revise our handbook as needed and they were instrumental in some of the key revisions that we had this past summer. And then recently, I think in November, I approached the SVA committee to assist with looking at the student dress code and looking at what other districts are doing, looking at what, what things in our current dress code are not applicable anymore or need to be revised based on the time. So it's very instrumental in that, with that help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tiskowitz. As Mr. Flukes took us to the results, you probably see that one of the gaps that might have been existing within our survey work is the voice of our students kindergarten through second grade because there's not a formal survey that's given to students. When we were really constructing the dynamic plan dating all the way back to the dynamic plan planning sessions, we realized this. So the communications and marketing team has taken the leadership to put together a K through two feedback process to get direct data from students. It operates a little bit like a focus group led by building leaders, so you know, a trusted leader in the building that can meet with students and get direct feedback in an environment and in a space where students are comfortable and feel safe about sharing their perceptions and ideas about the school. It's a really amazing opportunity to truly get that direct voice from our kindergarten through student, kindergarten through second grade students. We piloted it this past year at one of our elementary schools. This year, we will be implementing that district-wide at all of our elementary schools. So in the future, when we present data, we're going to have kind of a nice supplement to that along with the data we've gotten from students through surveys. We'll also have some findings from these kind of focus group settings with our kindergarten through second grade students. So we're really excited about that process. We feel like that truly rounds out our student voice portion of what we do every single year. Next, I want to connect to what Ms. Rale said about really connecting classrooms to the learner profile. We want to work really intentionally to make sure students understand the content benchmark categories that Panorama has so that when they take the surveys, there's buy-in, there's understanding about how this is showing up in their everyday work in the classrooms. And so just like the learner profile, we want to make sure that students, when you're asked to take these surveys, that you know what these benchmarks are and how they're showing up in the work that's being done in your classroom every single day. And we believe that that'll create more buy-in for the survey, more participation for the survey and just more value to the entire process for our students. And we want to thank the voice of our students for kind of giving us that feedback and we want to be really intentional about that before we administer the survey to students again. Of course, as mentioned many times, we'll share the building-level results with principals and program leaders. We want this work to be ongoing. This is not a survey that's done and then ends. This is truly ongoing work throughout the school year and even into the off-season to make sure this data is driving decision-making that's happening at all levels in all of our building programs. And of course, survey response promotional campaigns. We worked really, really hard this fall to maximize participation. That's why we're feeling really positive about that increase in responses from this fall to last spring. We worked really hard for that and we're proud of that. But the good thing about growth is you want to continue to grow. So we'll continue to really do that intentional work to make sure we're maximizing participation. We want to grow that number every single time we administer the family-school relationship survey. With all that being said, it is time for questions and feedback. We obviously have our department leaders if you want to gear towards more next steps. Mr. Flukes can speak to results and I can, of course, speak to any process or promotional questions that you have. So it's a great time right now for questions or feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. I'm going to open that up to Member McCoy.
So I have some questions about, I was looking at the family engagement, the summary results and where it said family engagement and it was 25%. So when I looked at some of the questions, like one of the questions is how often do you meet in person with teachers at your child's school? And so the favorable 9% is either weekly or more and monthly. And that feels like, I just don't know that you have parents that are going in every week. Like that feels like a lot. So I wonder if that's why that looks so low? And it also seems like some of the questions and responses are, are not easily quantifiable, like how involved are you? Because, you know, that may be, you know, differ for, for instance, once your children get older, that you generally are more involved with whatever activity they do. Like if they do a sport, you're in that booster club. And I wonder if parents know that that's the school as opposed to that club? So I'm wondering if they're answering the question, if they're, they're getting to the answer that you want or not. And then, so that's not really maybe a question. But then, when I looked at the demographic questions, the majority of this was answered by moms. Very few dads answered the survey. And is it given like one per family or could both, could multiple adults answer this?
Great question. Of course, multiple adults can answer it. To create the most access possible, we really ran this just as an open link. That's actually what Panorama does. It's one of the advantages of being with Panorama is it's a wide-open link, so anybody can take it. So there's certainly no limitations to answer your question.
And so then, what is the plan to get? So it's also pretty much not just the parents, but like when they talk about like primary language, it was mostly all primary English speakers. And so I'm wondering if we're getting a good view of all of our parent groups or if we're missing some because like they have household income and a lot of it seems on the higher end. So I'm wondering if we're missing family groups and how we're going to address that to get everybody's perceptions of the school?
Very good question. I can just assure you that we work really hard to use multiple media, multiple outlets. We promote this at the district level, the building level, even the classroom level and newsletters. So all we can do is get the word out the best possible and create the most access possible and the open link gives us a chance to do that. Of course, we're dedicated to trying to get as much results as possible and we'll continue to be dedicated to that. But we work really hard to promote it and certainly we want to maximize participation from every group in our district.
I can move on.
Yeah, I just want to know, is there, I mean, I know some people probably don't want to do the surveys just because it's stored in, you know, Panorama and stuff. But so is there an opt-out form? And also, do parents know when this is happening? I mean, I know for the family engagement part, that would, but like for the individual class students that are doing, do they know that this is coming up? Like especially the early age kids, like do they know that they'll be being, having questions and that?
I can answer that question. So yes, it's communicated to families and families do have the opportunity to opt their children out or to opt out completely. The other thing that we've done since the inception of Panorama is we have provided for any family, and I think we actually do it with all families now, but I can confirm that. So we provide all the questions. So we've done PDFs of all of the questions so that everybody knows transparently what will be asked, those types of things. So what we've tried to do is make sure that everybody knows that, you know, this is something that isn't forced, but it's something that gives us valuable feedback.
And then do the parents on the younger, like the K through second grade, do they get to see the teacher's perception of what their students are? I mean, is that shared with them?
It's not shared individually, it's shared in aggregate in this way. So the perception, the way they would get the perception of their student is through like communication with the teacher and things like that, but it's not shared in this space that way.
Okay, okay. And then one other question, I don't know if this is for this survey, but I could ask you this later if this doesn't apply to them. But I was just curious what the investigative, invested grading?
That's the, that's what the high school grading committee has named themselves. They're called the Investigators. They gave themselves that name. What they're looking at is grading policies for high school to, it started pre-pandemic and then with the pandemic kind of everything went on hold so that we could get young people in school and all those things. It's reemerged, it's a high school team of teachers and administrators and folks and they'll bring parent voice into it as it moves forward as well, just looking at grading policies, understanding what grading means, what's the value of grades, how are grades calculated, what is the pros and cons of different grading systems and having some really deep discussions about are grades telling students and families what we believe they're telling students and families? So they're diving really deeply into grading practices. That's what they've named themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Secretary Sidhu?
Thank you. First of all, congratulations on getting many more participants for the survey. That was, I'm sure, a lot of work for the team. Just kind of going through, I'll just do a few highlights. One is you've already talked about the grit, the disconnect between what teachers think, especially at the K-2 level versus the students and the sense of belonging and the teacher-student relationships. So I'm going to work for the district. I'd like to maybe in board notes, get a better understanding of how are these things going to be addressed, short-term and long-term? And I don't know the page number, but where you've got 2023-24, beginning of the year, a couple of the surveys require a login. I was not able to get in until I logged in, so I might need to check links on that one. And then still on that page, if we could go there, it's right after you have that orange boxes of the overview, right there. Next page, right there. So I see the summary reports and a lot of good information there. I wonder if there's a way to do a one-pager for families and staff, just to say, hey, this is, these are the big findings, not eight pages or 19 pages, but just key findings. Like here are some celebrations based on what we found from last year to this year and here's some work that we continue to do. We appreciate your input, your information, your feedback has been valuable, really thanking them and the students for their time and commitment into this. So I want them to know upfront, like you said earlier, everything is looked at, everything is going to be evaluated for whatever department it fits in, but really giving them just that one-pager overview of key findings, if that's possible.
And I think we could take, yeah, those 19 slides could probably fit if we just chunk it as per each survey into like a one-pager, like that could just have those key findings and most, so I think that's, I think the content's there and the level, I think, and I get your feedback, if the level, that's enough, we could probably just package it so it's a little bit more consumable than through a linear presentation.
And my only reason for saying that is, again, families and students spend a lot of time doing this. We want them to know this was the outcome in a way that's readable, in a way that's consumable in a couple of minutes. Having people go through a bunch of links and seeing 18 pages might turn them off and say, okay, here we go, another survey. But thank you, good job overall.
So I want to thank you again for the visualizations. You know, you take a lot of really complex data and made it really easy to see and understand. One of the things that we discussed that I know I don't think made it into the change here, and that was the response rate breakdown by three to five, six to eight, nine to 12. Mr. Flukes, do you have that information?
I do. So when we look at the student responses, right?
Yeah, the student response rates.
It was in general, it was in the higher, at the lower grade levels. So it would be in the 90s. I'll get those percentages here in a second. So 93% response rate for elementary.
Okay.
86% response rate at the middle school and 53% response rate at the high school. All those were increases from last year, but in an overall 14, but yeah, you can see that it's, students at the high school are less likely to engage in the survey.
Right. And towards what Members Sidhu just mentioned, I think that that one-pager and the conversations that we can have with families and with students about how this data is being used. There were some great anecdotes that happened here this evening about what people were looking for and how that data got passed down as part of that process. Being able to share how some of those free responses were, actually resulted in impact in the, in the school in this year, the ability to provide some of the actions and activities that we're doing as part of this process will make people feel that their voices have been heard. You know, because I think what we see is, in general, high school students are apathetic. You know, especially as you get higher up in the grades. I bet if we looked at the ninth through the 12th grade response rate, we would see a similar drop-off in that, in that process. And that's because they're too cool as part of that process. As somebody who has a 17-year-old, I know how that works in my household. As somebody who has a seventeen-year-old, I know how that works in my household. But I think that if we can communicate the value of, of this work and how it's being incorporated, we might get better response rate, we might get better participation in the process. And we might have people take the, uh, the, the surveys more seriously. Um, even in anecdotes that we've had in conversations as part of the FNO committee or in families, people were just A B C, A B C, you know, just randomly filling this in to say that they responded to it and not necessarily taking it seriously in the process. But this is really important data that helps guide the district and the administration teams on how we can best support our students in the things that they need.
Yeah, thank you for the feedback about how to share this out with the community. I really like the idea of the conciseness and just making it customer-friendly. That's great. Thank you both for that.
Member Westra?
Um, a lot of my questions were answered by, or comments were answered by, um, members Sedu and member Kehoe. I reiterate the, the more information we can give packed to the students and the teachers is good. Um, I had a question on slide number twenty-five, the boxes slide. I was a little bit confused what the differentiation is here. So, so I assumed that the orange was level, was percentiles twenty and thirty, but then I see forties, some forties are orange and some are green. And I was a little questioning why.
I had the same question because that's exactly how they appeared in, uh, the reports. So I asked that of Panorama. And so these are estimates. These are near, like they scored near the fortieth percentile, but it could have been slightly lower. And so their color coding, I think, aligns more with where it might have been slightly below forty, so it was orange.
So it's around the.
Some of them might have been a little bit higher than forty, so it was green. So, and I asked directly, I was like, why is this not making sense to me? And so they clarified with their, um, their analytics team that that's what that was doing. Because these, these are estimates. It's a national, so they can't exactly, you're exactly at the fortieth. It's like you're near the fortieth, maybe slightly below, so that's why you color coded it, um, orange.
And then are the definitions in Panorama, are they universal? So does grit mean the same thing here in Michigan as it does in California?
Yeah, we can't get the national benchmarks unless we use the exact language and then use that exact topic bundle as it is together. So otherwise, we don't get it. So yeah, it's pretty restrictive in that sense. So that what they can give us a national percentage because it's benchmarked on that exact wording and those exact topic bundles. So, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And Panorama is so, you know, rigid about that, that you, you can't even change a word in the question. Uh, or you'll lose that ability to have national benchmark comparison. That's why, um, the false version of the family-school relationship survey is all Panorama language so we can get those benchmarks. Last spring, we customized the survey so much that we lost a, a lot of those benchmarks. So it's literally word for word, the same for everybody.
Okay. And I, that's, that's interesting to know because like I agree with, with Patty that some of the questions are a little bit subjective.
Sure, yeah.
Also, in terms of the questions and the topic bundles, we've gotten feedback from our teachers. We talked about the education of, so when we prepare for these presentations, we give you an example. This is what, this is an example. Some teachers said that would be very helpful to have those same deep-level conversations with us, especially at the high school level, if our kids are coming to us and they're saying, hey, what is grit? And I don't really know how to explain exactly what you're looking at, and that could impact your results. So that's another, um, step when we're working with the building to really say, from this panoramic, uh, Panorama's vision, what is grit? What are we exactly looking for? Help to educate so that they can in turn help to educate the students exactly what they're asking.
Yeah, and, yeah, and similar with, uh, sticking with it, with, uh, one of the questions is about sticking with a goal for several months.
Yeah.
I can imagine a third grader, you know, I mean, yes. That might be a little bit of a prob, you know, yeah, an example would help. All right, thank you very much. Good work. I'm glad to see more responses. And, and I know from feedback from my own student that this was a lot better cycle of surveys than previous years.
It's great to hear. Thank you.
A follow-up question on the, the, the surveys.
Go ahead.
How, how, for the people that we're doing the national comparisons against, how often have they been doing this? Some of this may just be, um, our students not being used to the terms, uh, that we have here, you know, grit or whatever it is. Whereas if you're doing the same survey again and again, if we're comparing against a national, uh, norm and those people have been taking that survey for ten years, then they've learned what those terms mean. They know what those questions are part of that process. Do we have any of that information about, you know, the longevity or the, the length of time that these things are, have been out there?
No, we don't. That's a good, that's, I'm, I'm sure that their, um, their survey team could give us some insight into how often they might revisit the national benchmarks and how often students might be asked to participate, to get a sense for, you know, is there some sort of, you know, by, by students taking it multiple times, are they getting better at it? Whether that's a good thing or a bad thing or might throw things off. But I, I'm sure we can find some, some insight into that to have some more clarity on.
They're perhaps understanding what the terms mean, which is one of the things that we kind of identified here in the process. That maybe there's just an infamiliarity with, uh, unfamiliarity with the, uh, with the process and that that may be why they're answering some of the questions the way they are.
Yeah, and, and they don't necessarily use those topic bundle terms in the items. I mean, they talk about, like, for, for example, like a grit one would be like, how often do you, you know, are able to spend months at a time on a single task? You know, so that's, so I, I get that they probably are getting more used to answering those kinds of questions, but they don't use those terms necessarily, just to clarify, um, that for anyone who hasn't read each individual item yet.
They wouldn't use the word grit, but they would use the word how often you've been doing this. And so if there's more context that's been given to the students year after year in the process, then they better understand that. It's like, are you, are you doing an assignment for two months? No, you're not doing an assignment for two months. But are you focused on improving your reading or whatever it is? And providing that context may improve the students' responses and results over time.
Right. Sorry, I didn't mean.
Number Westra, did you have another question?
No.
Okay. Say.
So as a student, when I was in middle school, I noticed that there was a lot of participation in the surveys. But as I grew older, I feel like the numbers, the participation kind of started to dwindle. And I feel like part of the reason might be because the surveys are a bit lengthy. So maybe if we could shorten some repetitive questions or something along those lines or increase awareness of the impacts of taking the survey, then I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks for your feedback.
And just to build off of that too, like in middle school, it was more like a structured time to do it. And in high school, it's less structured, so that could also impact it. And then I have a couple of questions. A lot of them are quick. But could you go to the chart that has like all the data on it?
Yeah, that one.
So I noticed that school safety isn't filled out by anyone. That question, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, it's probably an oversight. Um, is that asked in the staff one? I can't, it, it could have been a relic from an old, I, I used it from last time. It's this, we're not asking it in the staff and teacher. It was in the old school family relationship survey.
Josh, that's a good question. That, school safety was a topic in the family-school relationship survey from last spring. But for conciseness, we removed it.
Thank you. And then, um, another quick one would be, I'm assuming, no, but is the focus group going to replace like the, uh, teachers filling out the, um, surveys for the K through two?
Good question. It's definitely not gonna replace it. It's only gonna enhance it and complement it. We just wanted that direct feedback from students, really to work alongside the feedback from the teachers. So in no way, shape or form is it replacing it. We just believe that it's gonna complement it very well.
And then, um, I've got two more. One, uh, question I had was, is there any concerns that the survey could be taken by a non-PCCS parent due to the fact that it is an open link? Or is that like not really a problem?
Um, certainly with the open link, you, you certainly invite anybody from the community to take it. But that access is important to us. We want everybody in the community to feel like they can take the survey. And, and they do identify what their role is in the district, so we, we, we take that as their word.
And then lastly, it's more of a comment, but it might be worth it to like consider going on and like talking on like the school news, like briefly or like sending them a clip of you like discussing like the feedback that you got and like that you are looking at it. Because I, I know a lot of students, especially this year, that they've increased like the mandate for the teachers needing to play the news, like that is a good source of us to get our information. So like, even if it was just a minute clip of you like being interviewed by one of the news, um, members or like something you submitted to them. Like a good example is the thing where someone just clicked the keys and then like the end thing. So like saying that you are like, even that, you're reading. That, that just could be a good way to bring up the progress. And I don't know if it'd be super complicated to do, but those were my questions.
It's great, great feedback. I think it's a usable piece of feedback. I, I do wonder sometimes if students would almost rather hear from other students than us adults. Um, but regardless, I think trying to get together some voice behind the survey, maybe it's a student and an adult working together, um, I think it's valuable feedback. Sounds very doable to me.
And student voice in action could work through that as well within cooperation with you.
Yeah, sounds great.
Great. I don't have any additional questions. I, most of my board colleagues asked my questions. I just want to say thank you for packaging, packaging this, um, information in a way that was easy to understand. I certainly, um, agree with, uh, a lot of the commentary about, you know, making sure that we know the why behind we're collecting this information. And I also, um, appreciate anticipating what are we doing next, the next steps and those explanations, um, how we're using that data. So thank you.
Thank you. We want to thank everybody that took the time to let their voice be heard, for sure.
Just, just want to follow up, Josh. I want to say, so just for the, um, to increase, um, potential engagement for students. And so with that example, the student hit the key like a bunch of times. And then the end of it, they said, oh, I wish I had some more time for lunch. And so what I did was that, that, um, I, I thought to myself, well, how many other kids talked about lunch? Because typically, building leaders are looking at these and looking at, but maybe no one in nutrition services is going in and looking at. So I found all the times anyone in the free response mentioned anything about a snack or food or lunch or any, or Bosco sticks or vending machines. And I, and I, and I found all seventy of those comments and gave it to our nutrition service and said, hey, here's what kids said this fall about food stuff and lunch stuff. So they have, some things we can't control, like, you know, vending machines being on at certain times or the length of lunch. But it's good for them to know those kinds of things, you know, like, you know, I wish the, 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 the lunch lady saw my hand more often, you know, and things, things like that, you know, they say those kinds of things that are helpful. So, you know, you know, if they need to continue to support, you know, those things for students. So we are listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto teaching and learning with Ms. Rail.
Yep, so, um, as you can tell, the December eleventh SPA meeting was pretty robust. And we have several first reads that we will be kind of presenting tonight. Um, I have with me Kevin Carr, the Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Professional Development, Rania Hamud, who is our K-12 Social Studies World Language and School Climate Coordinator, and Kathy Williams, who's our K-12 BAPA Coordinator, Curriculum Coordinator. Um, they'll be here, uh, to answer any additional questions, if there are additional questions after I kind of go through each of them. We're gonna take one at a time and then ask, ask any questions that you have. The first that we're gonna talk about is middle school health. Middle school health, it would be course materials purchase. Um, the M D E requires health education at both middle school and high school. So you're gonna see, as we look at middle school and high school, you're gonna see a lot of the language is the same in both resolutions because, um, a lot of the background information about health education is the same. Uh, the middle school team, uh, worked with health, school health consultants from Wayne Risa and looked at, uh, a number of different resources. Specifically, at the end, they took three resources through, um, a review using what's called the HECAT, Health Education Curriculum Analysis Tool, which is designed specifically for health, um, materials and resources. So as, and it was developed by the Centers for Disease Control. They reviewed, um, all of the materials and they selected a resource that they've asked to move forward for potential purchase, and that is Health Smart. This is an online textbook. Um, access codes were given to all of the SPA committee members and, uh, the SPA committee members were able to dive deeply into them before we, uh, talked about it at SPA. We also have codes that we will provide to you after tonight, after the first read. It will come in board notes and that will give you the opportunity to dive deeply into so that if you have any questions between now and the second read, we can, um, make sure that we, uh, go through them. The total cost for this resource would be fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and forty-nine cents. This is a three-year digital license. This is a little bit different because often you see us bring forward a five-year digital resource license. There's two reasons for this. One, health resources change pretty rapidly. And two, as we look at the curriculum cycle, which if you really want to learn more about the curriculum cycle, we'll be talking about it tomorrow night at SPA. As we learn more about the curriculum cycle and as we take things through the curriculum cycle, we also look at the cadence of which we do them. One, for how quickly things change in the content area. But two, also just to kind of balance out the budget throughout those, those, every five years of the cycle. So the cost for this would include a three-year digital license for students to access an ebook, interactive activities and assessments. This materials would consist of resources for thirteen hundred students and seven teachers. So, um, I'll open it up to any questions you might have about the middle school one and then we'll kind of walk through each of them from there. Um, and Kevin will be here as well to answer any additional questions about middle school, uh, health curriculum resources. I know you may have some more after tonight too, as you dive into them later. But if there's any initial questions, happy to take them. Okay, member McQueen?
Um, I don't have any questions right now. Um, maybe I will have some after I look at the materials. Um, but I did, um, I did before this meeting, I did look at the Michigan Department of Education website and it does have the standards on the website. So you can see how those align to, um, if maybe we could get those in board, like the link so people could find them.
Yep.
Because it's, sometimes it's a little confusing in that website to find where they actually are. You have to kind of know which section to click in so you can see, because we're saying that the standards align to the curriculum and that way people could also access the standards.
Yep. Yes, I'm done.
Um, and will we also, with the link, see the resources, additional resources that will be available?
Yes, everything, everything is in, um, everything is that a student would see, you will see. And you'll also notice, not in this one, but when we get to the reproductive health ones, that there'll be things that you'll be able to see that we would actually not have access to for students. And I'll explain that when we get there.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Members Sedu?
Uh, just one question that's repeated in some of the documents. You talk about M L L, Curriculum Coordinator, could you spell out M L L?
Multilingual learner. It's, um, it's new terminology. Uh, we kind of discussed it earlier about, it called E L at the state level, English learners, English language learners.
Could you spell that out for others?
I will, yes. I'll add that to the, um, as it comes through for a second read.
As an electronic-only resource, and I know we've got a really robust, um, uh, one-to-one device program and we have good participation rate. But do we have classroom devices that are available to support those students that maybe don't have their own device?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking forward to seeing the resources.
I asked a lot of questions during our, our SPA committee meeting, so I don't really have any here. Um, just some context about all of these. We had a good, robust discussion, um, because we were able to look at the materials beforehand. Um, and one of the things that I think we really liked about the online resources is that as, you know, health information does change, as new information becomes available, the materials can be easily updated. We can lock out components that don't fit with Michigan's standards or laws or, or this pol, this district's policies, et cetera. So it was, it's a good choice.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Um, I had the privilege to discuss this at the SPA meeting, so no questions. Thank you.
I have no additional questions either.
For the high school one, it's very similar. So what I'll do is just kind of talk about what the resources that was brought forward and the total cost for the resource. The resource that was selected by the high school team, and the biggest difference, of course, is the makeup of the membership of the team. Obviously, middle school teachers and middle school administration were working together with, um, the team. And in this case, it was high school. The high school health teachers, instructional coaches, multilingual language coordinator and the district-level administration. And again, there were three resources that ended up being brought forward for a deeper dive. The one that was selected is Glenn Co. Health and, um, it was piloted by teachers except for the human reproduction piece, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. Uh, additionally, and I didn't say this the last time, but I'll say it in this one, the resource is compatible with Canvas. So it, it actually connects to our learning, learning management system or Google Read Aloud and Google Translate, which will support up to a hundred and thirty-three different languages. We have around eighty-three, I think, in the district right now at the last count. Total cost for this. Total cost for this resource would be $70,083.12. This one is a six-year license for students to access the ebook, interactive activities, and assessments. The cost would be materials for 750 students and 12 teachers. So open up to any quick, any questions you might have, quick or slow, whichever your choice is.
Member McQueen?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
I don't have any either.
No.
Six-year versus three-year?
Yep. Just the way it fell, Glenn Co. was willing to do that for the same price.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing to add after what I said before.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Once again, I have no questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
The next two I'll do in totality together and then open it up for both of them. So, reproductive health is different than just your traditional health. Reproductive health is often called sex education. And as we look at reproductive health, it has some specific legal requirements in our state as well as other states. Those legal requirements are that a committee of community members has to be brought together to review all resources, and all resources, they cannot be piloted with students. Students cannot see them until they're approved by a Board of Education. And the community has very specific makeup. So you'll see in here the community members that were on the team. So, the community is, the committee has to be made up of parents and guardians. More than half of the committee is made up of parents. We also have to have representatives from other areas of the community. We have clergy members, we have health personnel, and other various members of the community that engage in this committee. The committee is co-chaired by a community member, and the committee has met over the last year and a half and reviewed several things. As the committee meets and then recommends a program to bring forward, resources to bring forward, there has to be at least two public hearings where folks can come together. We present the materials, folks can ask questions, and give feedback into the material. So on the second page of each of these resolutions, you will see the dates of the public hearings, the notifications. Notification must be done about public hearings at least two weeks in advance. So on November 16th, 2023, public notifications of the meetings were posted on the district website and in all of our school newsletters. On November 30th, the first public hearing was held at 4:30 to 5:30 at the Educational Support Center at Pilot Drive, and community members, we did have some community members attend. On December 11th, the second public hearing took place at the SPA committee meeting, where we then again reviewed the materials and resources and answered any questions. Health education is an opt-out process. So if a family does not want, reproductive health is opt-out. If a family chooses that they do not want their child to be a part of reproductive health portion of the health curriculum, they have the opportunity to opt their student out at any given, at any time. So, just want to say that as we look forward and look through this. These are the same resources with one exception. There is an additional module, there are additional modules in each of the resources. There is no additional cost because it's inclusive in the cost of the Glenn Co. Health and the Health Smart curriculums. What we do is we just turn on the modules for the health pieces. You will see in the memos, at the bottom of each memo, you will see the modules, when you see the actual resources, when you get to dive into them, you will see the modules that are not, that you can see as you look at the sample resources, that would not be visible by our students. Those would be basically hidden from any student use and stuff because they either do not align with our district policies and practices. Abstinence only at the middle school, abstinence only meaning that the only thing we discuss with students is that abstinence is the only way to ensure 100% safety from pregnancy or sexually transmitted infections, and abstinence based at the high school, meaning that at the high school level, we teach that abstinence is the only 100% way that you ensure lack of pregnancy or STIs, but we also talk about preventative methods as well, at the high school level only. So, the other thing that would prevent it from being viewed by students is if it does not align to the Michigan academic standards for health and reproductive health. So, I'll open it up to any questions you might have in this aspect on either the middle school or high school reproductive health course materials.
Member McQueen?
I don't really have any questions. I did want to point out, though, that in addition to the standards, you have to have specific certifications to teach this material.
Correct. Thank you.
I'm good. No questions right now.
No questions.
No additional questions.
Just thank you for all your hard work. I know this has been a long time coming.
No questions. Thank you.
No additional questions. Thank you.
No questions here either. Thank you.
Thank you. The next first read is a new social studies elective course that has been brought forward by the PCEP Social Studies Team, and this elective social studies course is known as the History of Hip-Hop and Rap. The course would allow students to study how hip-hop and rap have evolved from their origins to become a multi-billion-dollar industry. Students would analyze school-appropriate lyrics, music videos, and other school and age-appropriate resources to understand the struggles faced by underrepresented communities and how hip-hop gave them a voice. We talked about this extensively at SPA. We talked about how, because obviously hip-hop many times has some very explicit lyrics. So the teacher did attend SPA with us as well, the teacher who brought this proposal forward to the PCEP Social Studies Team, and then to the instructional team at PCEP, and he spoke about the resources that he would use, some of the ways that we would ensure that it was appropriate for school-aged students. And then there's different, various subtopics that would be addressed, genres, and then some of the background around mass media, pioneers, women, and women, the way women are viewed, both in hip-hop, and then the role of women in changing some of the view from hip-hop and rap in its origins. Students would learn how to use hip-hop and rap to, how that has empowered artists to use voices around the world. It's not just about US hip-hop, but also hip-hop in other countries and a global view of hip-hop and rap. And then they just would look at different resources. There is no cost to this proposal as it has been brought forward because the resources that would be used are ones that we already have in the district. Newzella, Gale and Context, which is Contemporary Global Issues, the Michigan E-Library, and other various curriculum resources that we have. So, we'll open it up to any questions that you have. I can, I'll be able to answer them, and Rania's here as well in case we need some additional conversation because she's been through the process with the teacher and the team as well.
Member McQueen?
I don't have any. I was, I was, though, listening to NPR, and they were doing a story on the hip-hop and how it affects fashion trends.
I just have a question on staff. Like, is there, this is, sorry, I guess I can pull that ahead. Is there, like, is this just one-hour class, or what's the, like, for staff purposes and that?
It would depend on how many students signed up for the class. So typically with electives, we increase the numbers of classes based on the numbers of students to sign up for it. So it would start off most likely as one hour of a class, but depending on how many students would want to sign up for it.
And so is there, do they have an outline or any kind of information on, like, what they're using exactly, or like?
They have a draft syllabus, and I believe we, we have a copy of that. We can get it in board notes as well.
Just clarification, I'm assuming this is going to start in the fall, so it will be in the course catalog in February?
Yes. And what it would do is, it would be go in the course catalog. If it's not approved yet by the Board of Education, it, courses go in the course catalog as pending board approval. And so what we do is then, if for some reason it does not go all the way through board approval, then we would schedule the student into a different class at that time, if they have that as one of their requested courses.
What is the publication cutoff time that you have for the course catalog?
We generally try to get everything to SPA before the December meeting to be able to get it into the course catalog. We can put things like that in draft course catalog. The course catalog comes out generally mid-January, so right around now. It'll go in as a pending, pending board approval?
So we've missed the chance to have this not be pending because we would have had to approve this in December to get that not be pending.
Yep. We tend, we tend to try to bring everything that's any new course proposals to the, at least the November SPA. This year, a couple of things did come a little bit late.
I'm really excited about this course and the creativity that goes into it. I would love to have, after we go through the registration, some feedback on how many people are interested, you know, how many students have signed up for it, because it's, you know, this is the kind of innovation that we exactly wanted to do as part of our dynamic plan. So, thank you.
This was, this was another really good and robust discussion that we had in the SPA committee meeting, and I think that all of the SPA committee meeting members wanted to take the class by the time we were done. The teacher is very energized about it and creative, and it's an exciting addition to our, to our course catalog. In fact, I think we asked for an adults' version for.
I think we had some adults.
Continually had.
To audit the class. No, you can't.
Say?
I have no questions, but this course looks really interesting.
I just have one quick question to clarify. Will this count as a social studies credit?
It would be a social studies elective.
So not a social studies credit course, then?
Right. You still have to have the required social studies course.
Thank you. Just to clarify.
No problem.
No questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And the last one that we have tonight is a course name change request, and this is coming from the PCEP VAPA team, the PCEP Choir Program, Visual and Performing Arts Department, and PCEP Instructional Team. And this is a proposal of changing the course name of Parksman to Bravo. And the reason for that is following the practice model by university vocal ensembles to remove gendered naming of vocal ensembles because the students in the course are assigned to the course based on their skills and vocal range, not on gender. Singers with a beginning to intermediate skill level whose voices fall in tenor, baritone, or bass range are assigned to the course currently called Parksman. If you look at our course called Parksman, you will see that we have various genders in the course. So the assignment is not based on gender identity, and our current gendered course name is not representative of all of the singers in the ensemble. So the PCEP team is proposing a name change of the course to Bravo in keeping with our district's commitment to ensuring that our schools create a welcoming culture and inclusive environment. The course name Bravo is consistent also with a course name Encore of our, one of our other courses as well in the, in the VAPA program at the high school level. So, open it up to any questions you might have.
So I was just wondering, when it says they're assigned, if their voices fall in, is there, like, is that the students say that, or is it from middle school?
There's an audition.
Oh, okay.
There's an audition for the classes, and the teachers rank the, where their voices fall.
Okay, thank you.
So, do these compete? Does this class compete? Have any competition?
Uh, they can, yes.
And how does that qualify, then? So they don't have, like, traditional male choir, female choir kind of thing? Were they, in the competitions, that doesn't affect it or anything?
No, it's based on the, the voice level.
Voice level? Okay.
No questions?
So, two questions. One, in the course catalog, will we reflect formerly known as, so that students don't get confused by this?
Yep. We had some conversation about that with a lot of our courses that have course name change, so, for at least the first year. So we would look at, putting some type of a notation in there.
Excellent. My second question is, if students, their voice changes throughout the, is this, this is only a semester-level class? Or is this a year-level class?
So teachers can make changes based on changes in voice or interest level as far as if they want a more competitive class versus a less competitive class.
Okay, so students, if, like, you know, by February, they're in a different octave range, they could switch to a different class?
So that I would defer to the teacher of exact timing when they would switch.
Okay.
But that would definitely be considered, yes.
Okay, I'm just, and it is a year-level course, then?
So these are one-credit courses, and being new to VAPA, I'm just digging deeper in all the intricacies, so I can find out.
If it's a one-credit course, it will be a year-long course.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And I think that the only cost for this was a change to the t-shirts, right?
Yep, a change in their performance t-shirts.
I have another question. Are you, are you done? So, so just being in choir myself, so a second alto would technically be a tenor. So, what is the ramifications for choosing which section they would be in, then? Because is there, like, a female voice, like, with the sopranos, or is this just going to be, like, a regular choir? Like, is there a soprano?
It's not gender-based. Yes, sure. So it's not gender-based, but it's based on whether their voice falls in the tenor range, the bass range. We also have courses that range in soprano alto as well. There is a variety of classes depending on voice range and also development of their voice performance and competitive courses as well.
Okay, so there's, like, so how would they discern, like, second alto versus tenor, you know, the tenor voice second? Is there, like, a tone thing, or is it just?
So it'd be based off their auditions.
Oh, their auditions. Okay. And do they have certain competitions at some of these choirs? What, like, is this a beginning level? Or is this like a, I know I've listened in to them, seeing that, getting the names.
Parksman is an introductory choral ensemble.
That one's introductory, okay. Yes, I will. Thanks.
Thanks for the questions. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it for teaching and learning.
Yes.
All right, onto Student Services with Mr. Tiskowitz.
Thank you. Tonight, you're being asked to consider as a first reading a resolution regarding the district's continued participation in a limited school of choice program for the 2024-25 school year. The Board must vote annually whether to participate in the school of choice program. As a district, we've participated in this program for the last 11 years. For the 24-25 school year, we are once again going to recommend a minimum of one seat for kindergarten through 10th grade with a maximum of 500 seats to enroll in the Plymouth Gant Community School District pursuant to School of Choice, Section 105 and 105(c) of the State School Aid Act. Section 105 of the State Aid School Act allows us to accept students in Wayne County, and Section 105(c) allows us the ability to accept students in counties that are contiguous with Wayne County. If approved, the process will allow for a 30-day advertising period and for a 30-day window to accept applications. This also allows our district to give preference to those that have siblings currently attending. Currently, there are approximately 1,200 students that are currently attending our district through the school of choice program. With this consideration, you'll see that it's up to 500 students with a maximum of one seat, or a minimum of one seat per grade level. By law, we have to enroll at least one student per grade level that we advertise, but we can go up to 500 seats total. If there are more than 500 applications, we would conduct a lottery, which we conduct a lottery anyway because that provides us the opportunity to know where people are in terms of offering placement. And I'll take any questions you might have.
Got it. Member McQueen?
I don't have any questions, and I'm assuming that when you advertise this, what the sections mean is all in there, so that it's very clear for families?
Yes.
And also that, once your child is accepted, you don't need to continually.
Correct.
Reapply.
And they are, once they are, once they enter the district through the school of choice application process, they are free to stay until they graduate, unless they break enrollment. And if they break enrollment, they would have to enter back in through an application window.
Thank you. And when is the lottery?
When is the lottery? I don't think we. I don't think we've selected a date yet. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just asking, it's very exciting if people haven't seen it.
We basically have a 15-day window as we make placements. To do the lottery, we always do it as early as possible. Kurt Tiskowitz is the host with the most during the online, uh-
It's very exciting.
It is very exciting. And just to, uh, uh, address your question a little further, we do ask families, if in doubt, apply. Uh, we get so many questions about, well, my situation is this, is this. And the, the message we always give is, if you're in, if in doubt, just apply. You really can't get, you know, uh, there's no consequences for applying. If you don't, you can miss the window and then, and then you're not gonna be able to make it.
Thank you.
I would also like to add that we have seen a trend in a number of our School of Ch- Choice families that, uh, apply through School of Choice, uh, not living in the community, but, uh, eventually move into the district. We've seen a, a, a large number of families that move into the district as housing becomes available. So that's a, certainly a sign that they wanna be in our district.
There you go. Do they have, um, do they get the same amount of financing from the state that the other students get?
Yeah, it's based on the perpu- pupil allowance for our district.
Okay, all right, and, and do we have enough support, like, so because of that, then we would add more teachers, depending on how many kids?
Typically, what we do is we look at where we have, you know, uh, seats available, and that's how they're placed.
Oh, we do the same, okay.
Um, without having to add additional, uh, staff.
Staff, okay. Thank you.
Secretary Sudu?
Um, question that comes up every year, for people who move into the district, let's say, March, April, they've missed the deadline, there's no opportunity for them.
For, if they move into the district, they become a resident, so they can come to the district?
I'm, I'm sorry, I should say, in the district, in the area, but not in the district.
Correct.
So let's say the Belleville area, so they miss that opportunity?
They do.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to wait till, uh, the enrollment window. There are two, two, um, options for School of Choice. Some districts choose to do an unlimited, where that, that means that they can come at any time during the year, and they don't restrict the number of seats. Um, we choose the limited, um, based on capacity, and that's why we choose the limited one out.
That makes sense, thank you.
Kurt, we've had past discussions about this, about the timing of when we're both approving this and when we start the, the, the process of applications, because we're seeing, um, surrounding districts opening this process up, and we wanted to make sure that we were available. Is, uh, where are we in, in that process and the timing, and how does that compare to what we did last year? And what surrounding districts are doing?
We typically do it this time of year. Uh, we, we've seen, last year, we had over 500 applicants. Um, and so we, you know, that, last year was the first year we did 500. Uh, the year previous, we used to do 250. But we've always received more applications than, than we have seats available. But in the end, we are able to offer most, I, uh, like this last year, we were able to offer all seats, the seats to everybody who applied. You have some people who, as Nick said, they, they apply and, and for whatever reason, they don't come. But, uh, you know, they, we, we, we certainly get, get our numbers.
To add on to that, based on feedback from here, we used to start at the end of, I think, February, then we moved to end of January, so now we're-
Right, okay.
At the very first meeting in January, so we're ready to hit the enrollment.
Got it, okay, so from a timing perspective, we're aligned with what surrounding communities are doing in this process, and so therefore, we're not missing those, those students that may want to attend.
That's correct. One of the challenges we have is usually in January is where we start the new initiate, uh, knit of the, uh, next track in my SAR Student Information System, and we can't really enroll students until that, that's done. So to go any earlier, um, is a challenge.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is only for students physically in the school, right, not in the virtual academy?
We offer it for the virtual academy as well. If, where there is a question, if they would like to consider the virtual academy. And we had a, a handful of students last year that were, uh, school, or for this school year, that, that opted the, uh, virtual programs.
Okay. I have no questions, thank you.
Uh, next, um, we have a resolution for non-resident employee choice. Uh, we are asking for your consideration, once again, as a first read this evening, uh, for the recommendation of non-resident employee choice for the 2024-25 school year. Uh, the board, again, has to annually elect whether or not to participate in the non-resident employee program. Uh, this program allows any staff member the ability to bring their student to the district, regardless of the district of where they reside. Um, currently, there are 114 non-resident employee children attending our, our district.
Member McQueen?
I don't have questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions either, thank you.
So I do have a question about this. So when, when, um, for this particular portion of this, does this, when we open this up to our employees, does, do their children count towards that 500, uh, those 500 seats or something?
This is completely separate. Completely separate.
Okay, thank you.
No questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we are on to citizens' comments. Looks like we have a few here. I want to remind everyone that we get three minutes to speak, it's your time to address the board. First up is Chris Voss.
Thank you, my name's Christopher Voss. Um, sitting here makes me wanna run for the school board. I don't know, we'll consider that. I'm a father of nine, I've got four graduates from Plymouth, five children still attending the schools. And I want this to be positive, I'm sorry it's negative. My children, going back to my daughter that graduated in 2014, it's always kinda made a joke in the family, uh, about the conditions of the schools, uh, how clean they are. So, tonight I went back to Salem. I was there on December 18th for my son's orchestra concert, Teddy, and for the middle school, and I went into one of the bathrooms. And, I don't know about you, have you ever attended, um, a gas station bathroom or gone to a rock concert and gone into the bathroom? And you literally don't wanna drop your pants and have them touch the floor because of how gross it is. The gentleman that got up and talked before about adding three people, whoever, I know it's a contract or something that they're doing, but whoever's in charge of them, or I was, I mean, I wish the board would just take a walk-through through the facilities. I mean, I went there tonight, I went back into the bathroom, this has been a month, and there's a garbage bag over the urinal, it's been there a month. My son said that it's been that way for months before. I even went and took a picture a month ago when I went to Teddy's orchestra concert. The grout in the pool, I mean, I, I, my kids play a lot of sports, so I go to a lot of facilities. Our facilities are terrible, they're filthy, they are absolutely filthy. Monica, our superintendent, Meredith, if you went through and walked through and looked at these facilities, you walk into Salem, and the first thing you're greeted with are these mats that are taped to the ground with duct tape. And some of the duct tape are there from, I mean, it's just hideous. I mean, so it's, there, there was a basketball game there tonight, I can't remember what school was there, but I saw these parents going in, using the bathroom from opposing schools. The floor is gross. The girls' bathroom door won't even close properly, and it's been that way for months. The entryways are deplorable, the mats, the tape, the walls. When you walk into Salem, the first thing you're greeted with in the corner is all this mist, the paint on the walls off. I, I just, it's filthy, it's disappointing. So when I went back in tonight before the board meeting, and I saw the bathroom, I was like, holy cow, I gotta get up and say something. So, um, I ran out of time, but there's really no excuse for this. Uh, we're Plymouth Canton Schools, our facilities should look amazing, they're filthy. So I encourage the board, the leaders, go over to Salem, walk in the side door. If you go in the front door, you got this beautiful front door, and then you got these mats that are duct taped down. That's something that can be fixed really easily. So, I sit here and we talk about all this money that we're throwing at all these different things, but our facilities are filthy. I would not take my pants down in a men's bathroom, the girls' bathroom door won't even close. The urinal's been broken for over a month. So, I'm just saying, I just encourage the board, I encourage the leadership in this district to take some pride in our facilities and be our future self now. The thing that we talk about we wanna be, we need to be that right now, and we need to take care of these facilities. They're gross, so, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, up next, we have Jennifer Voss.
After speaking at a couple of board meetings, I wasn't gonna come back, cause I figured nothing could be done, but then someone turned on a light at phase three in the morning, and I decided, okay, maybe change is possible. Um, but I believe that conditions at the high school will not change until spirit and pride returns. Because we have three schools for all, because of the way the high schools are set up and the random draw, there is a lack of connection with the home school. The survey today, sense of belonging was at the very bottom, and I'd have to disagree with member Kehoe. Um, I've known a lot of 17-year-olds, both at PCEP and other schools, and it's a lack of connection, not being too cool to take the survey. This lack of connection leads to no one caring for their facilities, because it's not really their field or their auditorium or their pool. Someone else will do it, but obviously, no one does. This doesn't happen at the elementary and middle school level as much. Families get invested and have pride in something they feel connected to. They schedule cleanups, garden plantings, et cetera. I've been to, uh, no. There are a few easy ways that could create some pride among students and community. Designate facilities as belonging to a certain school so that teams have a home. Spending money on a new pool and stadium should allow for this. Make a designated home for the Rocks, the Wildcats, and Canton. Teach the students how to make it a source of pride. And the band is another way to build pride. I love the band. Before, we spent another $200,000 on new uniforms, and I was really glad that they said tonight that it's been 22 years, or however many, since they've had uniforms. I was searching, um, board notes for the past few years, and I couldn't find it, and so, but I didn't go back that far. So it's glad to know that it is something that really is needed, but we also really need these band kids to play at our games. It, the purpose of a marching band is to boost morale and spirit. I am a huge Michigan hate, hater. I hate Michigan, ugh, I'm a Spartan, through and through, go green. I will root for Ohio State before I will root for Michigan. But, when that drum major marches on the field and does his backbend, I almost want to sing Hail to the Victor. That is what a band can do. And, so if our band were to go to our home games, at least, at least our home games, and play, it would build pride, it would build spirit. I have been to football games at our home field where we have no band, and the opposing team brings their drum line. And I wanna cheer with them, because the drum line gets you going. So, lack of pride, lack of spirit, and connection is one reason why we lose students to other districts. And if that's okay with this board, losing students to other districts, then keep going how we are, otherwise, we need to make some real changes.
Okay, thank you, up next is Rocky Johnson.
Good evening and Happy New Year. I normally come up and cover off on facilities and things like that, but that's been well-covered tonight. Um, I'd like to thank you guys for making a victory tonight for the band. When I first saw in December, the first reading of $184,000 in uniforms going out to the band, I was the jealous kid. Okay, why does the band get $184,000 for uniforms? Because they need it, that's why we gave it to them. Why do they need 3.2, 3.3 million dollars of a new facility to be built? Because they're homeless and they need it. See, I have no problem spending money for things that kids need. With the victory comes a learning opportunity for all the board members to look at. Ask yourselves, are there other activities at the park? Cheerleading, dance, freshman baseball, lacrosse, that you guys fund 100% of their uniforms? There is not. Going through in the last six weeks, I've sat on a lot of meetings for Salem Football for our five-year renewal, which used to be three, cause now it's every five years we get new uniforms. When the coaches got together and came up with the uniforms top and bottom, away and home, blue and white, the total bill came up to something a little bit over $42,000. We had to tone that down because of the money that was gonna be allotted to us, so we went with two tops, one pair of pants. Total bill, $38,000. The school, after multiple conversations, are paying $14,000 of that. The rest of it is forced on to us parents and booster clubs. Cheerleading, same thing. Cheerleading, I'm prepared for next year for Salem cheer, to write a check for $2,500 for sideline cheer and competitive cheer. I'm also ready and prepared to write checks for paying for the buses to get my daughter out to Brighton to cheer for a football game. I'm paying for that. So I wanna know why, it may be a review of the money, which budget that the 184,000 comes out of, the amount of money that the activity provides back to the district through pay-to-play. The 385, like by Salem Football, over the course of five years, we donate about $200,000 into the pay-to-play, and when we get uniforms, I have to pay 60% of it. 60%, the band got 100. Are they favoritism? I think so. A win, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. On to discussion, I don't think we have any items under-
I do have one thing.
Okay.
Um, we have the non-homestead property tax renewal that is coming up, and we need to have a citizens' and perhaps board member committee to help, uh, support that process. So I'm looking for board members that might be willing to, to support that, uh, that work.
Does anyone have the interest?
If you, you have interest already, that's fine, if not, you can send me an email, and we can get that going.
Okay. What would that involve?
We need to educate the PTOs and the other community groups like we do with other bond programs.
What was the bond?
So it's, it's not actually a bond, it's the, it's the renewal of the non-homestead property tax. And we need to make sure that the community knows when they see this on their, their ballot, that this is, uh, affecting non-homesteads, so non-residents is part of that process. Uh, it is affecting the commercial properties in the district, and it's a really important part of our funding process, because if that does not get renewed, it's approximately $38 million that the state assumes that we collected and will be deducted from our budget.
Because of the timing, um, with the election, it's February 27th, I may also suggest that you consider doing either a webinar or video-
Exactly.
-that you can push out, because we wouldn't even have that.
We do both.
I can help you.
Quickly, thank you.
Okay. All right, and, uh, let's move on to follow-up board questions. Looks like we got a couple.
Yeah, we still have, both of these are still outstanding. I think now that we're back in the saddle, we can get the NWEA entered, um, and just working through the 31AA, uh, throughout that process. Get those taken care of.
Okay. And any new ones from tonight, tonight's meeting?
Yeah.
There was, there was a, a request for the link to the Michigan Department of Education standards. What else do we have?
And then the draft syllabus for the, um, the class? The draft syllabus for the hip-hop class?
Okay.
And for me, I was looking for some of the gaps, the orange areas that need attention. Um, in board notes, you know, no hurry, whenever in the next month. What's being done to address those gaps, short-term and long-term?
And then the, um, link, the URLs for the health and reproductive health?
The course materials, yes.
The course materials, okay.
Thank you for that reminder.
And there was also, I don't know whether it's an issue or not, this is that the hyperlinks in the, uh, survey results, some of them were requiring authentication before they could be accessed, so we just wanna make sure that those are, um, public accessible when you get posted. I think they get posted tonight, or tomorrow? Okay.
Okay. I believe that concludes our meeting this evening, so I'm going to adjourn at 9:28. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.